Oh.
Oh, no. Oh, no. International.
Oh, thank you.
International.
Oh.
International.
Yeah. Can you speak to us, Jeff?
They do, they have everything. Well, we have afternoon. I wanted to be a second teacher, I'm very tired. I was, um, so. After, um, we, um, we, um, seniors got. No teacher, no president. Twenty-four, thirty-eight, eleven teachers.
How did that go?
In the principal life. And we're having, um, so, the middle of the, um, this group's, uh, that, the, uh, the, uh, uh. You can, uh, the, uh, uh, some of the, uh, when you see that. Hmm. We need to give it to them.
Um.
Six?
Six. Yeah. Yes. No, I'm in, I don't think, I don't think, no, I'm in, yeah.
Mrs. Thomas, I'm sorry, I didn't get something. Hey, good evening. Want to thank everybody, um, for coming to the Monday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four University Heights City Council meeting. Mrs. Thomas Lee Patawol.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mrs. Sacks.
Mr. Cooney.
Here.
Mrs. Wise.
Here.
Mr. Ra.
Here.
Ms. Marshall.
Here.
Ms. Weiser.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Sacks?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ra. Mrs. Thomas Lee Patawol.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Ms. Ra.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Do you think that Mrs. Sacks is excused? Um, will everybody please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the five, uh, the United States of America, and to the Republic of religious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, et almighty and just for all.
Okay, we will now, um, go into the reading and dismissal of the journal. Um, everybody was even of the minutes, whether any questions or comments on those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So.
I'll second it. Uh, Mrs. Thomas Lee Patawol.
Mr. Kane.
I'm standing.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Ms. Ra.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Stand.
Ms. Weiser.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Um, are there any additions or removals from the agenda or referrals to the meeting? Everybody has in front of you, there was an addition made, um, earlier today, but is there anything besides that? Okay. Um, are there any comments from the audience? Sure. Did you come to the microphone and state your name and address?
This is a microphone. This is, this is a microphone. Right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim Albin. I live on West Ludbrook. Last week, the question was raised, can University Heights afford its Juneteenth celebration? Okay, I'll start. This is better. Even older. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's start, let's start. My name is Jim Albin, and I live on West Ludbrook. Last week, the question was raised, can University Heights afford its Juneteenth celebration? The better question is whether we can afford not to celebrate Juneteenth. This year has last, even bigger in depth. Comparisons to other events are irrelevant. Not all events are the same, and they don't cost the same. Mr. Apple, and Mrs. Orange. Juneteenth is by rights a celebration by everyone, to mark the day that the dream of America was delivered to the darkest corner of Dixie. Whether we celebrate with knishes or kimchi, chitlans or calamari, whether we dance the harp or twists and shucks, Juneteenth marks the day when all God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will join hands and sing in the words of the old Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last, free at last, thank God Almighty, we are free at last." Why here and not in Pepper Pike or Morland Hills? She asks. Because Juneteenth is our privilege and honor to host, and thereby to state with the clarity that only money spent can claim. We are one city. A one city of different people living under the same idea. Emancipation frees slave and master alike, including freedom from the curse of living with the false conviction that some are superior to others. Equality and freedom and brotherhood are rays of sunlight, delivered at great cost in the last stinging corner, still living under the four blind eyes of Texas, ignorance, intolerance, inequality, and corporate. Can the city of University Heights afford this sponsor at Juneteenth celebration this year as we did last? Of course we can. Our city can and does afford what we want to afford, not least an extra five hundred thousand dollars every year for an antiquated and wildly inefficient backyard trash collection system. Not to mention paydays for banging the gal twenty times a year. I will end by updating a familiar folk tale, the story of Queen fiscal responsibility. Last week, a pair of tailors really, really swift and kelsey opened a shop in town and volunteered to provide new costumes for Queen fiscal and her followers in the other community. The new clothes were au courant of the latest trend imported from the fashion runways of Saint Laurent in Paris and the dugout of Brooklyn Dodgers playing in Los Angeles. Made using a see-through fabric imported from the Saint Rapiers Saran, somewhere in Mississauga. A third day of you in a dingy little room just past Adam's Barber Shop, the new transparent costumes marketed under the fiscal responsibility line and available in both Macy's and Target. Summoned a chorus of hula lois from Boston, with the notable exception of a boy sitting on the curb hitting against the recycling barrel. He said, rather rudely, speaking truth to power, the queen has no clothes. The lesson of the folk tale is that no formal gown, regardless of label, can disguise blatant racism. Whether the label is written about a claw covering the eyes and made from the wall of free-ranging virgin lambs in the shop, or from an invisible, fully transparent plastic gown wrapped around the full body armor of racism, masquerading as fiscal clues, and falsely claiming that this town belongs to us, not them. Appearances, most especially in politics, are reality, whether they're monochic, fess, or not.
Are there any other comments in the audience? Yes, please come to the microphone. If you could state your name and address.
My name is Cassandra Collier. My address is four, 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 six, Silsby Row, University Heights, Ohio. So, next month, I will become a thirty-nine-year resident of University Heights. But first, I want you to know a bit more about me. I was overjoyed when University Heights planned a Juneteenth celebration for this community in two thousand twenty-two. My community. I've lived here for a very long time. After it was declared a holiday by the President of the United States on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, many places throughout the country where Juneteenth had not been celebrated planned their first events. So ours was the following year, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That included our community, and it was an amazing day of events. Everyone should know our history, that President Lincoln announced that the Emancipation Proclamation would go into effect on January first, eighteen sixty-three. However, the final enforcement took place in Texas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and celebrations began in Texas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-six, mainly as church-centered gatherings because African-Americans were not allowed into the community centers. Why is this important to me, you may ask? My parents were from the South. Dad was from Texas, and he grew up knowing about celebrating Juneteenth. Mom was from Louisiana, and being so close to Texas, Juneteenth was celebrated throughout her life. That is, until nineteen fifty-three, when my parents moved to Cleveland. However, my brothers, sisters, and I grew up knowing about Juneteenth. We had long heard stories about Juneteenth and about picnics and parties and other events. My mother continued to celebrate in June, calling it Children's Day, with us continuing our cookouts at her home on the second Sunday in June, not Memorial Day, not the Fourth of July. It was our own personal family, Juneteenth. But sadly, my mom never got to celebrate the Juneteenth events that began as a federal holiday with our celebration on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mom passed away in January of that year at the age of ninety-three. So, Juneteenth may not mean anything to anybody in this room, but it means something to me, and it always has. So, thinking about how Juneteenth may be viewed by some of this community, I think about the current trends of racism in America towards people of my color. It ranges from banning books in schools and libraries, not teaching history related to slavery and oppression of my people, the funding program for affirmative action, and recently in Florida, all the D E I, Diversity Equity and Inclusion offices and institutions of higher education are being closed. It seems like everyone can have their day in the sun, except for my people. In fact, there seems to be an all-out effort in this country to squash what my history is all about. Could that be possibly happening in University Heights? So now, I am going to speak about the Juneteenth budget and the comments that accompany the talk about the budget. In particular, this was said, and I quote, "I don't understand why, why," and this is from the transcript, so it may sound weird. "Why, why are we having security?" I thought you knew, know, what, what is planned about June, and how many, what is planned about June that would mean, it did say a hundred fifteen thousand dollars worth of security, but we have Fall Fest with lots of people, but we don't need fifteen thousand dollars worth of security. Is there something about June that we think is very unsafe? Is it the programming? What I mean, I looked at that, and quite frankly, I have African-American friends that when mentioned, when I mentioned it to, they were offended, that's offensive. I'm sorry, it's offensive, end quote. And this discussion went on to someone in the next sentence talking about criminal activity. Wow, that is a lot, from fifteen thousand dollars for security to talk about unsafe programming, to offended African-American friends, to criminal activity. So now, I'm offended. I'm offended because a question about fifteen thousand dollars for security has been related to unsafe programming. My African-American friends were offended about the high security. I'm assuming that that's what they were offended about, and criminal activity. Did the members of the Finance Committee really want to know about the reason for the fifteen thousand dollars security cost, or was there something else? I ask because there was talk about why there was so much security needed at this particular event, and not all the rest of the events that occur pretty much weekly in the summer. Then it was said that the committee couldn't get performed, they should not get performers that cost twenty thousand dollars, and then the security is twenty thousand dollars. A lot of things that were said, I did not like, and I found them offensive, and it came out of the mouths of people on the Finance Committee. But I'm telling you now that this should not be a joint venture with another municipality. This is not a celebration that should be changed through, but they were talking about Diversity Days because it's not a diversity program. It's Juneteenth. No one celebrates or changes anyone else's celebrations or holidays. St. Patrick's Day is St. Patrick's Day. Ramadan and Eid is Ramadan and Eid, the Fourth of July is the Fourth of July. I feel no respect here. To discuss Juneteenth in the same breath as unsafe programming, to offended African-Americans, to criminal activity, is a problem for me. But as Judge Judy says, I gotta see who I'm working with. Now I see. Please show some respect to the people of color in this community. Juneteenth is a bona fide, paid federal holiday, and it should be respected and treated for the day that it is, a day of celebration for African-Americans who acknowledge that the struggles is real.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Are there any other comments? State your name and address, thank you.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Osie Mayneal, and I am a resident, actually, of Euclid now, where I graduated Cleveland Heights High School, and my family and friends still are residents of University Heights. I'm here today representing Spread the Love Foundation, and we are one of the vendors from, uh, last year's University Heights' Juneteenth celebration. My organization, Spread the Love Foundation, as the name would imply, uh, we are on a mission to do just that. Through our participation in University Heights' twenty twenty-three Juneteenth celebration, uh, we also are chairman for our board, is also Crazy Bone, Anthony Crazy Bone Henderson, who was the headline timing for last year. He is a two-time Grammy Award winner and has many other accolades. First, I would like to start by commending Mayor Brennan for his, uh, dedication and making Juneteenth the premier celebration for University Heights. That's very bold of you guys, it's very forward-thinking. Our mission for Spread the Love Foundation, part of our mission is garnering cultural equity for hip-hop. I want to first say that after watching the YouTube video that you guys posted from last week's, uh, city council meeting, uh, I was also, uh, taken aback by some of the comments, particularly about the fifteen thousand dollars needed for extra security. And I would say, as a former public employee for the city of Cleveland, and being the special events and outreach manager for the Department of Public Utilities, which includes Cleveland Water, Cleveland Public Power, and Water Pollution Control, I'm very versed in special events, large special events, sponsorship, and what those costs can, um, amount to, but also the return on investment for communities. I would say personally, Spread the Love Foundation, uh, received so much attention, donations, and awareness from last year's event. It was very, very helpful for us with raising awareness, and also as being a former resident of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and a alum of Cleveland Heights High School, I was very proud to be a part of the event last year. Now, putting on my special events hat, the need for the extra fifteen thousand dollars in security clearly, um, showed me that, number one, no research was done before the determination was made to up the budget and require the event to have fifteen thousand dollars in extra security. Because had research been done, the city council, your police chief, or whomever made the determination, would have seen that there has been no violence, no incidents, no anything as it relates to hip-hop concerts or celebration in Cleveland or surrounding suburbs in at least the last ten years. Also, um, I would encourage you guys, so just being more frugal or doing your research to understand, and not what looks like racial profiling, because there was absolutely no, no basis for that. And so, I mean, and thus, I don't have privy to all the information, but just based on the meeting that was held last week, there was no basis, and had any research been done to, uh, before it was required, you guys would have made that determination. So, um, I would just say, it was a worthwhile event. Uh, we really, um, garnered a lot of support for our mission, and also our chairman enjoyed the event, and, uh, Mayor Brennan, we thank you for your hospitality and the opportunity to participate, and we look forward to participating again this year. And so, thank you, guys, and again, I love the fact that you guys are being forward-thinking, because in this day and time, if anybody needs extra awareness building as it relates to diversity and, um, inclusion, it's the African-American population. So, thank you, guys, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? If you could state your name and your address.
Uh, hi, I'm in. My name's Dr. Alicia Sloan, uh, three, eight, three, nine, Hillbrook Road. Um, I like my last name. My last name is Scottish, or there's a debate that it might be Irish. Regardless of what it is, I'll never know. Um, I have my founding history traced back to about eighteen thirty-eight, and then moving on that, I run into slave tables where we are, the records of black people weren't kept well, if at all. We're talking about males and females, one, two, three, four, five, we didn't really have records. And regardless of what happened, a few decades later, you know, we got, uh, our freedom. My family received their freedom. I don't, I'll never know if my name, if I come from Ireland or Scotland, I know that I'm not. Um, or if my fanatistic, fair, slave, and master is not saying. But four hundred-plus years, plus another century and a half of, um, systemic racism, we've arrived here. And in that meeting, our event was compared to that of Fall Fest, another recreational event. Um, I thought that was very demeaning, disrespectful, a dimension of the event. It didn't take four hundred years, plus another century and a half of racism to come up with Fall Fest. That was a beautiful idea. It was an event to bring a community together. It did, however, take that long for us to become able to celebrate Juneteenth. So, I would advise or ask, request, or however you want to say, to be a little bit more cognizant of the words that you let fall out of your mouth in regard to an event that celebrates a particular culture. I don't ask to be celebrated on any other holiday, like June, excuse me, uh, like St. Patrick's Day or St. foot de maize. I celebrate, on Juneteenth, we celebrate black people. That's it. Has nothing to do with diversity, we're celebrating black people. Diversity Day is a beautiful idea, just not a replacement for Juneteenth. We don't ask to be celebrated, we include everybody. We invite everybody to come and celebrate black freedom. And I think that for people on this council that say that they work for us, I hope that means everybody. Everybody, not just a certain group of people. And for the budget to be cut from about forty-five thousand dollars to ten thousand from the city, I understand if there's another ten thousand dollars, um, coming in, but from ten thou, forty-four, excuse me, forty-five thousand to ten thousand from the city, that speaks very differently to me than what's planned to be working for us, me, including with everybody. I think that's about all I have to say. I just hope that the idea of Juneteenth will not be compared to another recreational event. We did not take four hundred-plus years to get to where we are, comparing that to Fall Fest or another event that was just an idea that came to bring a community together.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience? If you could state your name and address.
Sure. Uh, greetings. My name is Reverend Dr. Vincent E. Stokes II, three, six, four, one, Washington, Illinois, University Heights, Ohio. Uh, I'm an educator in the second-largest school district of the state. Um, often we know what the Mayflower is. I mean, how many of us have ever heard of the Mayflower? But many people don't know what the white lion is. The white lion was the slave ship that brought the first Africans to America in Jamestown in sixteen ninety. I did hear the comments made last week. I was not offended, uh, because how I took the comments were, we didn't have the money or the resources to be able to continue to do, to have this event on this caliber. But I want to encourage you to think about it from the perspective of me, a black man. I mean, you know, y'all are black, but you can imagine, it's hard being black in America. It's real hard to be black in America. Uh, just walking out my front door, I already have a mark on it. I'm black, I can't change it. It's who I am. I'm ontologically that black, I'm phenotypically black, I'm black. And being black, uh, I already have a mark on my back. Uh, it's not just me, I have two children, a six-year-old and a nineteen-year-old, and they walk out the door, they're black. Uh, so when you have an event like Juneteenth, that event tells the blackness of me that in this city, I have some type of relevance and importance. For me, uh, I don't have a lot of events around here that, that support who I am and my identity as a black man living in America, but this was one of them, this is one of them. This is one of them. And I want to encourage you to continue to fund this event on these levels, because you have an entire demographic of people who live in this city, who, as and living in this country, have been overlooked, have been degraded, have been cast down. And it's all been done in the name of expediency or in the name of, we don't have the money. But I want to say this, we have money for what we want money for. And the reality is that we need to have money for this. And I'm again with this and say, people want Black people's rhythm, but they don't want to take our blues. And that's one of the problems that we have right now. If you want our rhythm, you got to be willing to take the blues that go with being Black as well. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the audience?
Hello, everyone. I'm Fay Benson. My address is 3621 Cedar Brook Road, University Heights, Ohio, 44118. I don't have a book here, sweetie. However, I listened to the finance committee's meeting last week, I mean, a few minutes ago. I'm shocked and appalled by the statements that were made. Shocked and appalled, because as a Black person, I know what it is to live in America. Like I just told you, say. I've been racially profiled in this city, where I've lived for twenty-eight years in the last three or four years, simply because of the color of my skin when my neighbors or people in the city don't get sighted. And I kept it down because I'm just like, mm, I don't want to be the mad Black woman. As Mike Cook would know, he watched me. I talked to him many times. I'm shocked and appalled. But more importantly, I want Juneteenth committee celebration to be about everyone in this city. And it's my mission on that day to walk around and ask everyone that comes in that park to come back and celebrate. I've seen the mayor there. I've seen Jeff there. I've seen other people there. But I haven't seen a lot of you guys there, which is important, because you support our city. You're employees of our city. Come out. Come out. And let everyone know that this is about us and our diversity. Doesn't matter what color you are. It's a celebration about freedom and democracy and peace and love and harmony. That's what it's about. I went to my first, my family, to my first family unit in Atlanta, Georgia. My great-grandmother. We don't even know where her grave is, okay? My great-grandfather was a sharecropper. He took everything from. And yet, I've paid taxes in University Heights. I work. I retire. I've been here a long time. And I'm still, still racially profiled. Now, can I worry about a young person of color being stopped? I worry about why there are more people that don't look like me at the Juneteenth committee, I'm sorry, celebration? Because our country is under attack. Democracy and freedom and love and peace and harmony, it's all under attack. Some people wanted dictatorships. But what people don't know about dictators is, once they get in office, they're not all that nice. They don't care about anyone but themselves. Let's celebrate our diversity in University Heights. And yet, there should be a diversity day. I agree with that. But there also needs to be a Juneteenth celebration.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
Michael Maliskas, 2592, University Boulevard. I came up here last year to thank council for approving the funds for Juneteenth. It was a wonderful celebration, which I was glad to attend. I understand the need to balance a budget. I agree completely that it doesn't make sense for a small city like ours to be spending more than we take in. So, I had no problem with the discussion. We have to make tough cuts. And if that, if Juneteenth is one of those that has to take the tough cuts, that's okay. What really bothered me were some of the comments, as so many people already mentioned, but two in particular. One, asking, why should Juneteenth be the premier event in University Heights? Why shouldn't it be? It already is. It's obvious to me that some of you have not attended, because I went last year, and there were more people at Juneteenth than there was at all of the summer concert series combined. The second one, maybe even worse, is that it's not for everyone. Why isn't it for everyone? I would like people who had made that statement to explain to me why Juneteenth is not for everyone. It is for everyone. And the only reason that you could be saying that is because you have an axe to grind against that event in particular. That same comment was not made about the Memorial Day parade. It wasn't made about summer concert series. It wasn't made about Fall Fest. It was only made about that single event, the most well-attended event in the entire city. And I want to know why.
Mr. Council.
Hi, and you can state your name and address.
Xavier Allen, 2051 Ashurst Road. I understand financial constraints. I understand these challenges, tough decisions got to be made. Listen to the record of me. My big concern was something I don't feel like we're all in front here. Juneteenth, you may know the story beginning, but Juneteenth belongs to everyone. It's an American celebration. And like it or not, we are where we are, as you're obviously saying, really, where we are in our country. This is an opportunity where we're investing in culture. We're investing in our community. And that takes hard work. There's no way around it. Some of the comments that I heard in the debate disturbed me. But what disturbed me more is if we're not willing to confront ourselves. We're all human. And I'm extremely patient and understanding. But Juneteenth is not something that's just for me as an African-American man and a archaeological or anthropological exploration for you as a white man or white woman. It's ours. And for a number of reasons, Juneteenth is an important celebration. I didn't hear that discussion and that conversation. I didn't hear why it's necessary. Even in terms of discussion about the actual cost, I think it would have benefited to really get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, why those costs are where they are, what that event brings, what's the, let's do a cost-benefit analysis of what that brings to the community. Juneteenth has turned into something that my children, my daughter back here is an entrepreneur, she's ten now. That's an opportunity where she comes out, and she's made her aware, and she sold. She got her cousin, her aunt, actually, in the first year, her aunt turned us on to it. Her little cousin, a niece who comes over from Morgueville, Sola, now comes, and comes into our community and sells her wares to these people. You know, the impact of experience, friends we, from as far away as Brunswick, who've come to celebrate with us here, and where it's high to spend money in our community to enjoy a day with our community, can't measure that. How powerful. I do think there's something to be gained by partnering and investing more in how we, to curate, prevent a national concern. You know, I feel like there were things that were said, were not said in those comments. And we're all big men and women, and boys and girls. We have honest conversations. Let's talk about that. But I'm very excited. We cut that budget massively, as what it sounded like. We may get something that we, none of us want. And the investment in culture, investment in community, our children will see that. You know, I think they're responding now. We feel where investment happens. All right, they're a part of the community. They're very established. We want all of those lives. We got to work for each other.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I do have one emailed. It's from Rebecca Slifer, Train One. Hope this mail finds you and good health and good spirits. I'm writing to ask if the university, if the university has been contacted by or in communication with the Brennan administration or anyone on the safety or the safety director's team as St. Patrick's Day is fast approaching. Safe to assume that people will likely begin celebrating St. Patrick's Day on Friday, March 15, and the festivities will continue to Sunday, March 17. My hope is that the city and the university are working together to make sure that the appropriate safety measures are in place for your campus, the students who live in the community, who are, who often host parties, and the residents of UH. I want to be confident that the city leadership has a plan in place to prevent property damage and to curb disorderly behavior in the community and your campus. Unfortunately, I foolishly made the assumption last year, and on March 18th was not only greeted by city streets filled with litter, but also snow. One can only imagine the mess that our city service professionals had to clean up. I'm confident in reading of the city ordinance, which indicates that the laws in place are sufficient to provide the police to act to stop property damage, contain people exhibiting in public drunk or disorderly conduct, and to write citations for littering on public property. I hope that they see and those governing operations on campus. I know that Mayor Brennan takes great pride in serving on the No Happard Board and in other initiatives that consider our environment and that enhance and maintain UH civic pride. As a taxpayer, it's my expectation that the person responsible for the safety of the city and protection of the people who live here and their property have a plan in place and that the city leadership has communicated that plan to you to share with the university. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I was going to say something about Juneteenth as well.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Please, I'm so late.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Engelbrecht. I'm the House and Key of the Director for the City University Heights. I would like to address some of the comments made during the most recent budget hearing meeting concerning the city's Juneteenth celebration. The comments during the meeting such as, quote, "Why is Juneteenth the premier event that University Heights is putting up?" unquote. Or, quote, "Fall Fest is a whole community event." All of these are community events, but Fall Fest has a broader scope and a broader base that it attracts from, unquote. Or, quote, "Diversity encompasses a lot more." Maybe we could change it into a diversity day. We could do a lot more programming, unquote. I was angered, to say the least. City's Juneteenth celebration committee was formed so that the city's celebration truly came from the grassroots up and would be like no other in the Cleveland region and possibly within the state of Ohio as well. The committee is consisted of neighborhood residents, small business owners, and volunteers who have given their time, energy, and devotion towards creating a celebration which every resident within University Heights could enjoy. As a celebration, it's the perfect way for the city to showcase itself and say to outsiders who may come, hey, come see our community, come see our neighborhoods, come see our business districts, how walkable the city is, how accessible it is to the mass transit, how short a distance it is to University Circle, which is actually the fourth-largest employment center in the state. And maybe, just maybe, people who come to the event would make the decision to move here, start a business here, put down roots here in the community. The events taking place during the celebration are discussed and debated within the community or within the committee by members of this community, business owners and volunteers, and open to any, any, who would like to join. So, it's angering to hear it be asked why Juneteenth is the premier event that University Heights is putting up. My question and response to that is, why not? The, Juneteenth is now, rightfully so, a national holiday deserving of celebration. The committee took the celebration as a chance to not only commemorate the ending of slavery in the United States on June 19, 1865, but to also celebrate Black creativity, awareness, art, leadership, history, culture, and beauty. Last year's event showcased members of the Divine Nine, Zumba artists, jazz bands, gospel, fitness, a discussion on issues affecting the Black community, financial literacy talks, health and wellness. It was emceed by Karen Cotton of WKYC, was DJed by Marcus Allen Borre, and had multiple local hip-hop artists celebrating the 50th anniversary of the culture of hip-hop, including one-time or one-two-time Grammy Award winner Crazy Dog. And thanks to the committee and all of the planning, last year's celebration became one of regional significance within only its second year. So, it's angering to hear it be said, "Fall Fest is a fourth-community event." All of these are community events, but Fall Fest has a broader scope and a broader base that it attracts from. So, then I would ask, what is it about Juneteenth, now a national holiday, that makes you feel as though Fall Fest would have a broader scope and base? When everyone is welcome to the city's Juneteenth celebration? Over four thousand people joined us that day last year for Juneteenth, dwarfing any other event at Walter Spence and Community Park, including Fall Fest. Through planning, we even chose to help the celebration on a Sunday every year, so that members of different faiths would have the ability to come join us for the celebration, since it's a holiday to be celebrated by everyone. The choice to celebrate Fall Fest for, quote-unquote, diversity over Juneteenth is a personal choice. I don't think it's more than that. And it's also angering for it to be said, "Diversity encompasses a lot more." Maybe we could change it to a diversity day. We could do a lot more programming. So, then I challenge you, challenge everyone, to find a local celebration in the Cleveland region, even Fall Fest here, which encompasses everything that Juneteenth did here in 2023. This is again, thanks to the residents and small business owners who took part and are taking part in planning the celebration this year. Last year's budget rose after consultants' last-minute recommendations for security, local county health department's recommendations for portable toilets, and saints came in after the budget was already finalized. The rise pointed to the number of people who could potentially come to the event, nothing more. It didn't point to, it didn't point to any type of danger or anything else that would mean trying to tie souls to the Black community, even prisons. It pointed to what became a regional celebration where people who would come all the way from Pittsburgh to University Heights for the celebration would be left with a lasting, great impression on them and everyone else who came. That didn't happen for Fall Fest. It happened for Juneteenth. Celebration became a way to truly showcase the city, our unity, and our diversity. So much so that the city just received a ten-thousand-dollar donation from Dollar Bank because they felt it was a growing celebration. They wanted to be part of it. But not so that they could pay for half of the budget for the event. It's not what they wanted to see to happen. So, in closing, I'll end with this. Juneteenth is for everyone. All are welcome to join us. All can take part in the celebration. All can learn about American history, more about American history, and all should.
Hey. I'm the mayor now. So, reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action there.
I'd like to begin by thanking everyone from the public who came here this evening to state their views on our community's Juneteenth celebration. As long as I've had the privilege of being mayor, I've sought to be everyone's mayor. When we say that University Heights is a diverse mosaic, that shouldn't just be marketing for public relations. That shouldn't just be a sign in our city limits or a logo or a letterman. There were at least five distinct groups of folks in our community. I am mayor for all of them. There's the Jewish and Orthodox Jewish community, and I am your mayor. There is the Catholic community, and I am your mayor. There is the public school community, and I am your mayor. There is the university community, the students, the faculty, the staff, the administration of John Carroll University, and I am your mayor. And finally, and not least of all, there is the Black community, and I am your mayor. In 2020, when George Floyd was murdered in Minneapolis, I took action. When students wanted to march and protest in our community to bring attention to both Floyd's murder and that Black Lives Matter, I coordinated with the leaders of the protest, our safety services, our businesses, the schools, all stakeholders. Demonstrators marched from the front of Wiley Middle School, this building that we're in today, down Cedar Road, down Morgueville Center Road, to City Hall and the police station, and rallied outside of our municipal complex. This was done safely, respectfully, and meaningfully without incident. That evening, I went out there and I addressed the crowd. I told them that I heard them, that I was with them, and that justice did not allow us to wait to act. We convened the citizens committee to reform policing policies, doing in our own community the thing that we couldn't do here. Working together, we reformed our city's use of force and de-escalation policies and did so with everyone at the table. We included our own police We included our own police department. We included leaders of the protest and also in that committee a cross-section of residents. Eventually, every participant of the committee won Citizen of the Year as a group. That is the University Heights I am proud to be mayor of. Which brings me to last week's finance committee meeting. The budget cut to our Juneteenth celebration and the comments made to justify an outcome fall a little short of anything to be proud of. I go back to 2020 when I wrote a column for Our Mosaic Magazine contemplating George Floyd's murder and the events of that summer, contemplating our twin public health crises in this country, the COVID-19 pandemic, and systemic racism. Our goal of words of writer Ibram X. Kendi, the author of 2019's How to Be an Anti-Racist. That is not enough to not be racist. One must be anti-racist. And the importance of being anti-racist is to recognize, and I quote Kendi, that, quote, "The only way to undo racism is to consistently identify and describe it and then dismantle I love that. I aspire to that, which is why I must respond tonight to what was said in the finance committee last week. It is my duty as your mayor, it is my duty if I am to be anti-racist. It is my duty to respond to certain council members, to my fellow elected officials, to ask, "What did you mean when you said that the Juneteenth celebration isn't for everybody? When you said it is only for a certain group of people?" Juneteenth is both a national holiday and a city holiday. We all celebrate the end of slavery in this country. Surely, you did not really mean that only black people celebrate the end of slavery. We join together with our black brothers and black sisters to celebrate the end of slavery. This is a celebration that everybody may take part in, where all are welcome. We've held a Memorial Day parade in this city for over 60 years. The parade honors those who have been lost in service to this country. We all participated in the parade, and that parade is for everybody, even those of us who did not personally experience the loss of a family member or a friend who died in service to this country. I've never heard anybody say that the Memorial Day parade isn't for everybody, that it's only for certain people. While the members of our city council treat the Juneteenth event differently than our other events, saying that one event is just for certain people while the other events are for everybody, that's racism, and that has to be called. Last year, we had in our Juneteenth celebration as a headliner, Crazy Bone, a platinum-selling, Grammy Award-winning artist among other high-profile performers who were on tour and whose contracts required a certain amount of security, especially given the turnout we were expecting and turnout that we got. Maybe it would be easier for some folks to understand, were it Mick Jagger or Taylor Swift come to town to perform, maybe then some folks would understand better the prudence of the additional security that comes with having a celebrity entertainer perform. And in fact, this information was all presented to city council last year at the time that we approved funding the additional security. To have one member of council, let's make suggest in her effort to be blunt, as she put it, that the reason the city needed additional security for Juneteenth, more security than Fall Fest, was because the city must think that the people who attend Juneteenth are more dangerous than the people who attend Fall Fest. That's a racist statement, and it's a false thing to say, and it ought not be a part of the public discourse. People who say that sort of thing should not be in the front of the council meeting room. They shouldn't be in the front of the classroom. They shouldn't be anywhere working the levers of power or holding a position of responsibility where decisions are made that affect the public. When another member of our city council stated that the budget should be cut on this event out of fairness to the taxpayers, what taxpayer are they being fair to? We are all taxpayers. There is a more pernicious and distorted context in which the word taxpayer is used in public discourse. It's the reason why I've gotten away from using the term taxpayer when discussing public resources, and it is this. The term taxpayer has been used historically by some white people to differentiate themselves, they who they perceive they are paying all the taxes, and the black people whom those same white people perceive get the benefit of all their taxes. But of course, the fact is that black people who really have been working on pro-life and justice motion taxes as everyone else agrees. At University Heights, black people make up one in four residents, and people of color make up one out of three residents. So the question must be asked again, fairness to the taxpayer means fairness to whom exactly? If that's the argument for cutting Juneteenth, we deserve an answer as to how it is fair. End of them. Juneteenth was our best-attended event at the Walrus in 2023. It was rated higher, higher, on our community event survey than the Memorial Day Parade. Why won't we continue to fund the Juneteenth celebration? What is the end goal that comes with defunding it? Who served on it? One more. When a council member said that there's more diversity than just one group of people, without having the nerve to say explicitly what group of people she meant, but it was obvious, so I will say, clearly she was saying there's more diversity than just black people, and celebrating black people is freeing from slavery, that we should celebrate a diversity day instead of Juneteenth. It's wholly disregarded that there is a new federal holiday of Juneteenth that President Biden declared just three years ago and that our city codified by ordinance. Why won't we now make up a holiday called Diversity Day and celebrate that instead? What is the problem the city council member has of celebrating Juneteenth in this city? We should all celebrate the end of slavery. We should all celebrate freedom for black Americans. We should all celebrate how, after the Civil War, this country was reformed and reborn, duly dedicated to the causes of freedom, with equal protections for black and white alike. As President Clinton once said, "There's nothing wrong with America that cannot be cured by what is right with America." He was right then and he's right today. There is, there is an enduring paradox, two things that are simultaneously true and in diametric opposition, and it's that America was founded to secure the blessings of liberties and that America was built on the backs of unpaid black slave labor. Slavery is our country's original sin, and it's a country we will always have to atone and account for. There will never be a time that we don't or shouldn't because there will always be the history. Celebrating Juneteenth is a prime opportunity for us to remember how far we've come and how far we still have to go. Just last month, we passed a Black History Month resolution, and in that resolution, she stated that, quote, "Black history is American history." It's one thing to write words on a sheet of paper. We have to put those words into action. That action means that we hold the Juneteenth celebration, that we continue to fund the Juneteenth celebration, that we don't cut in order to be fair to taxpayers or make up some fake holiday to celebrate instead, and that we don't respect her, that the people attending Juneteenth are dangerous. There were no incidents at Juneteenth last year. The only incidents we've ever had at a Juneteenth event are people who needed a little medical attention because they got overheated sitting out in the sun to be home. So where do we go from here? In the middle, the city council should restore and fold the funding for the Juneteenth celebration, the city's premier, best-attended, and most-popular cellular event. Individual council members who have said racist things in committee meetings about the event should apologize to the community for what they said. But more than that, those council members should go home, go upstairs to their bathrooms, and look in the mirror and repeat into the mirror just one last time the things they said. They should look at their own faces, watch their own mouths as those words come out of their mouths one more time and hopefully for the last time. They should think about how bad that looks, how bad it sounds, and how bad it is, and they should vow never to do it again. Then they should ask themselves what they really stand for, what values they actually hold, why they are in public service, and until they can articulate good reasons, don't be that bad. And if you can't do that, then look deep down inside and ask yourself, what are you doing here? What are you really doing here? And if you can't answer that with something good and positive, if you can't answer that with the love and respect needed that it takes to help to move this community forward and move everyone who lives in this community forward, maybe, maybe you're at the wrong one in the world. I don't take this lightly. I don't take racism lightly. Last week, you were wrong, but this week, you have an opportunity to make it right, and I hope you do. Thank you. This concludes my opinion.
We're now up to reports and communications from the city council and the taking of action there. Just want to make a couple comments based on what the mayor just said. In the finance committee meeting that we had last week, well, first of all, let me back up a second. I want to thank everybody that came and gave public comment today. None of your comments were taken lightly, and I know that there'll be a robust discussion during our agenda item. That's what public comment is for. That's what council members are here for. We're here for you so you can speak to us directly if you have any concerns. I know every single one of these council members, no one is a racist. There were no undertones of racism during that meeting. And the mayor has done a big enough job just now of splintering the community even further when it was just repairing itself over the last two years. So we will continue this discussion, and I just want to make one other, one, something else very clear. Juneteenth was never going to be cut. The amount was going to be lowered. It is still double than any of the other programs right now, and that can change in our discussion when we have it on the agenda item. Juneteenth is important to the city and it's important to city council. Do not let what the mayor said blind you to any of that because it is untrue, period. Okay, we will now move to reports and communications from the directors, Department of Finance.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Wise, sir.
I think we've just been attacked by the mayor, and the mayor attacked me personally, and he knows he attacked me personally. So I would like the chance to respond. I sat here and I took notes. None of one, the base budget for Juneteenth was $20,000. That is more than is allocated for any other event in the city. That remains untouched. Council did not cut that budget. They did cut the budget for security, something I think the mayor has chosen not to explain, and I think people need to hear it here. Yes, you do need to hear. I'm willing to listen to you, young lady, and now I ask you to respectfully listen to me as well. And I think your dad might agree because I listened to what he was saying.
My son.
Oh, it's your son? I'm sorry. I apologize. All I see is a head, and that's, that's further the problem. Here is the issue. Council asked for the budget and to meet with the department heads to discuss everything that was going to be in the budget, and we did that beginning in September. Council was told in September to go, we have to wait until November until after the election because the mayor was unsure who would be sitting in the council seats. In November, after the election, we requested again to meet with the department heads and to go over everything that was planned on being in the budget so that we could discuss fully what was planned and what was going to happen. We were just not told we couldn't discuss it and that he wouldn't have a budget. He also sent to the department heads and he gave them an order not to talk to us about anything regarding the budget or he would hold it in insubordination. It is an email. It is accessible, if you wish to access it, through a public information request. That's a violation of the Ohio Revised Code. It's a civil violation, so he is without penalty unless we were to hire a lawyer and take him into court. So when we were finally given the budget in the middle of February, we were given numbers on a sheet of paper. That's all. No explanation as to what that budget consisted of, no explanation as to what was planned. When we met, we do know what our city departments generally need, so the discussion regarding those departments was pretty clear. But in coming to budgeting for the events like the summer series, Fall Fest, Juneteenth, all we're looking at is numbers. We don't know what's planned, and there was no one here to answer it because the mayor sent to us, and it's on the tape, well, Jeff would not come. We could have talked to him. We could have talked to him before. We could have talked to him then. And yes, we could have, like a... Unless you're absolutely positive of him, don't shake your head. I am not a party speaker. I'm not a politician like the mayor is, and what I just heard was a prime speech. Seriously. Here's what my statement was. Here's what my statement was about what I was handed on paper. If somebody who wasn't involved with the city picked up the budget and just looked at the paper, they would wonder why $15,000 of security was sitting for Juneteenth and not for anything else. And to me, that says something it shouldn't say. That says something that is racist, if anything. If you just look at numbers, and that's what my statement was about. People look and they read things and they interpret it if they don't have the background. And that's where the problem comes in. We have to educate ourselves. Every one of you that came up here and spoke, and when you spoke about your history, I know your history because I have talked to my friends who are African-American. I've talked to them and I've asked them, what is your life like? Thank you for flipping me the bird. I appreciate that, Ron.
Kiss my ass.
No, thank you. But here's what I've learned. I've learned that one of my friends named her two kids, Kyle and Lauren, and it's a bunch of... "Why'd you name them Kyle and Lauren?" And you know what she said? "Because when they apply for a job, I want them to be considered for that job without race coming in as a factor." As a white person, white people don't have to deal with that, but African-Americans do. That's a problem. That's an issue, that someone has to bury part of their heritage in order to be able to present something to get a job. That's how racism permeates. Racism permeated for years because of how we did housing in this country, because the African-American community was cut out of the banks, and it developed a cash economy. And because you had a cash economy, when we did something with FHA loans, you were deemed to be creditworthy because you didn't have credit like white folk did. That's the kind of institutional racism that is out there and continues to affect the black community. That's the kind of stuff that hurts. That's the kind of stuff that's a problem. The discussion about the events as a whole, we're not about this is some bad event or nobody wants Juneteenth. Good Lord, Juneteenth, because of the number of people that turned out, is probably an event that is sitting there that allows you to educate, and we all need educating, even the mayor. We need educating because unless you can educate us, we can't begin to break down those barriers. We have a lot more barriers to break down. We need more diversity in our safety forces. We need a lot more. You just don't lead one way. You lead by speaking out. Sometimes when you stand up, you get backlash, and if you don't like it, that's a problem. You know, I read the mayor's little posting about the Mother Jones article, and I really thought about it, and it was interesting because the Mother Jones article says, "If you use the word taxpayer, that it's a dog whistle." Well, yeah, it is sort of a dog whistle, but here's the reality. Even if you are poor, and I grew up poor, you're paying taxes. If you buy in the store any paper product, you are paying a tax. If you're lucky enough on the meter that can get you to a job and you put gas in the tank, you are paying Ohio and federal gas tax. So everybody is a taxpayer. I prefer to use the word resident, but that can be sort of inclusive of only people who actually reside within the city. If you said taxpayer, I'm a liar. But is anybody meaning it as a dog whistle? I doubt it because everybody I know in this city pays taxes. I think that this was a great thing, that someone could use to decide to beat up on the council and certain members of the council. And there is no doubt that the mayor and I are not good friends. But here's something strange. You know, people say to me, "What do you think of the mayor?" And when they say that, I tell them, "He's done a lot of good things." He has, and I support those things. However, I will call him when I think he needs following, and I hope you do too. He doesn't like it when people tell him, "Hey, maybe I think you're wrong," but he needs to hear it. We all do, and we need to listen respectfully, and that's the important part.
And I want to know if you understand this when you're being called out as well, because the comments that you made, or that video, or that name, or that... Okay, so thank you. We had public comment. We're going to move on to the next agenda item.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. King.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I just, as a member of the City Council, I just thought it would be good for someone, someone to say it. Black history is American history. University of... The University of Highten Celebration of Juneteenth has shown our community to be exceptional. It showcases our city as a welcoming, as one welcoming for all, so much more than home. Really hoping you'll pick this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. On to our reports from directors. Mr. Kennedy, Finance.
Vice Mayor, I do not have the final numbers for February, so I'd say if I can come back in the next meeting, you will detail update on revenue and expenses through that month.
Thank you. Mr. McFadden.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to let council know, in connection with the university square matter, I have invited a legal counsel for the developer to attend the next meeting, an executive session. We'll be asking that, that executive session be conducted at the front of the meeting so that they don't have to wait a period of hours until the end. And in connection with their being here, we will be discussing what will at that point likely be documents that are in final form that will get the parties resolved in the bankruptcy matter and allow the transaction to move forward and for some action to occur on site.
Thank you. Do you feel that we gave an executive session tonight after the meeting?
No, there's, we're still in the negotiation phase. There's nothing really new to report, but material progress has been made, and accordingly, I invited lawyers from the developer to attend the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, Public Safety. Chief Rogers, please.
Your report, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And Fire, Chief Perko.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Good evening, council. Just wanted to use the nice weather today to remind everybody that next week is Ohio Severe Weather Awareness Week, that's March 17th through 23rd. Just to remind people that you may hear emergency broadcasts on reverse number one systems, on the radio. Wednesdays, the Ohio Tornado Warning Weather System. Usually that test is done at 9:50 from its facilities that have those sirens, so we don't want residents to be alarmed if they hear that. This is awareness to good weather that's hopefully around the corner. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. And Mr. President, Mr. Pennington.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. I just want to bring everyone up to speed that this coming weekend will be the Spring House of Hazmat Waste Collection and Paper Shredding Event, which will take place Friday, March 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We drop off only items at the service facility. Begin on Saturday, March 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We drop off an onsite paper shredding occurring at here's the High Service Department at 2301 Boerneville Center Road. Wish all residents to stock out and drop off their items.
Thank you. You know that the building, Commissioner's not here, Mayor's too, letting you report a building?
No report.
Right. How's it, Ms. Raynorb?
Vice Mayor, I have no report.
Thank you. I see we got our city engineer. Are there other reports, Kenny?
No, I'm still getting organized, but hopefully by next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Communications and Civic Engagement, Mr. Pope.
Vice Mayor, no report.
Thank you. And I know Mrs. Rucker is not here. Our mayor, or any reports from her?
No report from that.
Thank you. We now will begin the agenda items. Agenda item letter A, ordinance 2024-03, establishing permanent appropriations for the year ending December 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency, but it is on second reading. This is in regards to the budget. It's in a budget meeting, a finance meeting last week. I think Ms. Weiser mentioned in her statements that this budget was only given to the City Council at the beginning of February, which left little, if almost no, time to review this. We typically start in September or October and have a series of meetings which we were not afforded to have this year. Budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee and the Lake Committee. There were some adjustments that were made, some highlights that I would like to discuss right now, and then we will discuss the Juneteenth Celebration. I'd like to invite Mr. Raynorb when you're ready for that so we can have a better understanding of what is going to be planned for this year. On the, on the updated budget, we did, council did pass an ordinance to purchase the Yabby Building, which is next door to our police station in order to begin our new facilities, engineering, architecture, and hopefully bringing those to fruition for new buildings for our municipal campus. That was not in the original budget. I spoke with Mr. Kennedy, and we did add that just for everybody's, for everybody's information, that is cash. So it has not been, it's a capital expense. It has nothing to do with our operating budget. We have investments, and our investments are, that will kickstart our municipal campus. We have probably enough to build one of our buildings. We believe Pleasant Fire will be the first two buildings built, and both of those will be tapping into our investment reserve. We do also have a large ticket item. We passed ordinance to, to, and to lose recycling in the city. That will be a large cost, and additional employee will be required as well as equipment. There is another service meeting on Wednesday to finalize what used recycling will look like. We had a pretty good idea, but the extra employee as well as the equipment needed right now is around $370,000. It could be less depending on the finalization of the types of equipment that we need. One thing that the City Council Finance Committee and the Lake Committee added were fly cameras for the Police Department. This is a trend that is happening throughout the country, actually. It has reduced crime in the 90% range. These are fly cameras that are on license plate readers, and they can track a car going through city to city, which has really, really deterred crime. That was added based on the numerous safety committee meetings that we've had with Ms. Marshall. If anybody else would like to discuss what was said in the committee meeting before we go on, I'll have the floor open.
I'd like to just have a question about some of the adjustments that we made, or we had questions, and I don't know if those, were all of those addressed in this final copy here?
Yes, every question and adjustment was discussed with Mr. Kennedy. We both compared our notes and made sure that all of those adjustments were heard before all of the committee work entered into the updated budget. Okay, I'd like to discuss what the audience members came up to public comment about the Juneteenth Celebration. I'd like Mr. Raynorb, if we could. We didn't have the opportunity to speak to you at the finance meeting. So if you could explain what the plan is for this year, what type of activities, what funding you think right now? We know that there's one grant that has been granted, if there's other funding opportunities that are available, and what your committee looks like and what they've been talking about. Thank you.
Sure. So the committee right now, again, is made up of residents within the community, including Ms. Benson, who spoke along with Tecla DeChant, Dr. Sloan is part of the committee. There's, there's a few other people as well. We're all residents of the community, of the community, small business owners. There was a small business owner who was recently part of the committee but is no longer. So the committee itself, again, is, is, is open to residents, to people who care, to people who want to see a great event within the, within the city. Right now, we have planned two separate stages, just like last year. The main stage being 20 by 20 with sound being provided by MPI Audio. They will also be providing the stages as well. We have tents coming from people rent. The stages themselves, I believe, come out to around 11.5. The tents come out to a little bit over, or at $3,000. We have been looking at different performers, including a jazz band, a southern jazz band like something that you would see in New Orleans. We've been in touch with the Cleveland Corral, who has taken part in the celebration the last two years and is looking at coming back this year as well. Kira Cotton from WKYC is coming back as the MC. We're still in the process of looking at DJs, but again, we have eight hours to utilize the stages. The backstage itself, as part of the committee process, we've been looking at different things to do, including not just the yoga and the Zumba and the hip-hop dance workout. We're looking at line dancing for the backstage. We're looking at potentially comedy for the backstage, and again, making it a truly unique event within the Cleveland region, and it comes from the folks that actually live in the city. So the budget includes the $15,000 for security because we're also looking at potentially reaching out to some national acts. We're looking at R&B this year instead of hip-hop. Hip-hop was, the 50th anniversary of hip-hop was last year. So we're looking at going a different route, but still somebody who could headline the event and, and, and bring something to at least the eastern suburbs and the east side of Cleveland that's worthy of, of a celebration. And that's it.
Thank you. So I just had a couple questions to start off. Again, one of the reasons we had such an issue with this is because we were not allowed to speak to the directors beforehand, and we were not at that committee. So we were basically left in the dark, and nobody had any answers to the questions that we asked. Do you have any contracts that are currently signed besides the $11,500 and the $3,000 for the stages and tents?
We have agreements. Contracts have been signed as of yet.
Okay, and about how much are those agreements totally right now?
Roughly, I want to say roughly $6,000. That's from artists, again, two jazz bands, the, the MC, well, yeah, the MC, the gospel choir, the Cleveland Corral. Roughly $6,000, that's it right now.
Okay, and are there any, and I know there's residents, there's small business owners, are there any other employees of the city that are part of the committee?
Yes. So Benicia Hamilton, who is, she's new, but she's a mayor assistant.
That's receptionist.
Uh, receptionist, yeah. And Deanna Berman Fisher, who was here, she's been part of the committee meetings as well. So that's two. Kelly Thomas is part of the committee as well, so that's three, and things like myself is four.
Okay, and are there any other leads on funders for this program?
So Dollar Bank being gracious with the $10,000 donation, we're still reaching out to, to some other local organizations. I have some, I have at least one or two who are looking at donating as well. And donations as far as sponsorships, I don't know if it's been done previously in the city's history. I want to say that the $10,000 grant is probably the largest sponsorship for any event for the city, and that was because, you know, Dollar Bank saw the potential in keeping the, keeping the flow moving when it comes to having a true regional celebration that could be embraced by the community.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to mention one thing for the benefit of the audience. Last year is, excuse me, $14,000 or $15,000 for safety. Last year's, excuse me, their $14,000 or $15,000 for safety was not necessarily, as the mayor said, because of the act. Our park does not have the correct address and entrances and exits as a larger venue that could hold, I think it was 4,000 people, correct, Mr. Engelbreit?
Correct.
So because of that, that is why our police chief and Mr. Engelbreit together researched, what do we need, nothing to do with the act, what do we need to keep our residents safe in case there's a fire, in case there's some kind of accident where people have to leave, either come in or leave in a safe manner. It had nothing to do with the acts themselves. That park is not made or equipped to handle that amount of people on a regular basis. That is, that is the reason, and that is the reason why I speak council approved those extra dollars two weeks before the event. So I want to make that very clear also. I do want to say before we continue talking that if we had this budget earlier, and if we had this information beforehand, we would be able to make a more educated decision, unlike what Ms. Weiser said, when you just see the number and have no idea what those numbers encompass. So I want to thank Mr. Engelbreit for coming up and explaining to us what this is going to look like this year. It seems that it's actually going to be a little different than last year as well. And I think the more years that you do this, the better you get at it, and the more input from the residents and the more input from the city itself. So before we talk about dollar amounts, does anybody else want to chime in on anything?
I have a question, Ms. Engelbreit.
Yes, sir.
From the time that we introduced the budget at the February 5th council meeting to the finance meeting, three weeks later on February 27th, anybody from council reached out to you about Juneteenth?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
So the question that the mayor just asked is strange to me, because I'm 100% sure that you instructed them not to talk to us about anything pertaining to the budget. So why would we reach out, knowing that they're not going to talk to us?
Before the budget is introduced.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ren? Yeah, I just want to go into some of the cost items here, specifically 2022. Mr. Kennedy, remember what the total budget was for the 22 Juneteenth celebration?
Exactly.
It was 10.6. I thought it was somewhere around 10. So I, there's a lot of energy in the room about this event, it's a very important event. I just want to know how we got to this point. In 2022, we had a program, an event, that was costing $10,000. And then in '23, in the budget, I think it was 20 something, 30, close to 30, 20. So the budget had doubled from '22 to '23. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we spent twice as much in '23 for 4,000 people. I think the concern that we heard on this council is, how did it double once again from that 20 to 45? And that's where we, there was nothing about, people could perceive however they want.
The, I can give you the reason. I'm sorry.
I think that's where, even where I looked at it, like, wait, then how did we go from 10 to 20, 20 to 45? Those are the questions we need to ask.
Right.
Because when we see 45 versus 10, and now the other events escalated as much, that's when you get into these types of conversations. So there was the question about, and one more thing, there was a question about security, specifically, because this is a $15,000 line item for security. Now again, this is our largest event, 4,000 people. I know the mayor mentioned he's expecting 10,000 people for the Eclipse Party, where there's no security. So, okay, and that's where we're confused.
That's, that's, that's right. So as part of the planning, outside of the committee, I met regularly with both the police and the fire department about what they felt security should be. And as part of that planning, I found out that, you know, the police department on Jun, or the day that we were going to be celebrating Juneteenth, had roughly six to eight police officers that they could assign to the, to the event. Now, in 2022, that never worked, because it was the first time, first event, it wasn't as heavily populated as the second one, which was last year. And, you know, he and the police chief, I love you, bro, we went back and forth, you know, talking about police, what it would look like for the community if it was over police. You know, we went through all of those scenarios. And at the end of the day, we went through with the consultant who dropped out at the last minute, because they were to be providing security, and they wanted to drop out at the last minute, so I had to get in touch with the sheriff's department, and it was the sheriff's department who provided security in large part for the event. It came out to, I want to say 10 sheriffs, which encompassed the majority of the $11,000. Now, there was also security that we had to provide around the stage, which the company itself provided, the consultant. And that's where the extra money comes in from 11,000, along with the additional, which would be, again, help for the stage. So that's, that's where the 15,000 comes in for security, and that's part of the biggest jump between year to year. There was also the jump with the portable toilets at the event, because after the budget was already produced, I met with the county health department, and they let me know that for any event that has 10, you know, 1,000 people or more, their recommendation was that we have 20 toilets. I budgeted six, which was a copy from the 2022 budget, six toilets and two showers. So I had to go back to the company and say, hey, you know, what would be the cost for 16? And I ran it by the county at first, I said, would 16 be okay, because we have two toilets, which are on site? They said, yeah, that should do it. 18 they were okay with. And it wasn't anything firm, it wasn't anything that the county said, we can't do the event unless we have. It was their recommendation, and of course, I wanted to go with their recommendation, because they know what to talk about. And when it came to toilets, I did, you know, just provided what I thought would be adequate for the celebration. So that was another piece to the reason why the budget doubled. Those were, actually, that was it. That was it, that was the reason. We had everything else covered. We had, the budget was budgeted in for Crazy Bone, along with for undercut, or underground artists to be part of the celebration, that was all budgeted, along with the rest of the act. So the addition came from security from the consultant, security from the sheriff's department, and extra portable toilets, which we did for the gun.
So what was the final spend for '23 then?
I want to say it was $43,000, or roughly, roughly.
Okay, and I just want to be clear about where my frustration comes in when we review budgets. Last year was a $20,000 budget item. I had assumed that the administration would plan for $20,000 in expenses. Instead, from what I've heard, when I was in these meetings, the administration spent all that money and then realized, oh, we still need these other things, which compelled us to increase the budget two weeks before the event. That is not what I want to get into on any event in the future. When there's a budget, it doesn't matter what it's for, capital, operating salary, whatever, when there's a budget, you work within that budget. So that's why we have to fight two of these things. It's important that we stick with the budget, not spend all the way, and then say, well, I still want to do this and this, I need more. We heard that about the Eclipse Party, which, you know, the mayor already bought 10,000 pairs of glasses before we even had a budget. So those are things that we have to watch out for, you know? Is it appropriate to be doing it that way, yes or no? So I thank you for answering these questions that we have now. You said 43 last year, so now that gives me a good base to work on. And I'm supportive if we look at our recreation budget in whole, and maybe, you know, it's just a recreation total, and how the administration chooses to use that, whether it be for this event, that event, I can support that, if we maybe cap recreation in general, instead of things going out of control one event at a time, just maybe camping at a recreational level. I'm supportive of that.
Mr. Cullen?
Thank you. So I looked at the numbers from last year for the event, and the questions that are coming up now are in direct response for what Ms. Engelbreit proposed last year when the additional funds were requested. The, it's more detailed, and it provides clear information as to what the expense for the event would be. The revenue as reported for 2023 was $6,675 incoming. The expenses was $43,496, approximate $36,000 difference. This year, most of the initial proposed in the draft budget was $44,100. And the revenue currently is listed at $18,000, but that would include the $10,000 commitment from Dollar Bank. So the difference there is $26,100, which is about $10,000 less difference than 2023. I didn't get into heartbreak over that. I understand the concerns, whether council members, the questions they have, and I think they're all valid, my friend. And I really appreciate Mr. Mark Voight, he came to appear this year, it was more detailed. I've enjoyed the event, gone through it, you know, the last two years, but I appreciate, you know, Mr. Rock's questions and the other questions that have come from council. But I also appreciate the work that the committee has done, because the difference between the revenue and the expense has actually shrunk. So that shows that not only do we have a good event, it's a marquee event, and what actually the revenue coming in has increased, which decreases the burden that the city's brought. So that shows me that we are moving in the right direction, and we should continue to do that.
Mr. Cullen, do you have a sense?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cullen, cover for the council.
I have one more thing I forgot to mention. And I thank you in that meeting for getting the presenting sponsor lined up, and I'm encouraging you to continue to find donations from throughout the community. And I feel that the more donors that we have for this community, the better the program can be. And so at that meeting, when we found out about the $10,000 presenting sponsor, that's why I immediately said, let's add 10,000 to where we were at at our base. I still feel that anytime you bring in additional donors or sponsors, let's put it back into that pot to make it better. So I'm encouraging you to continue to do that.
Ms. Weiser?
I have a question. Are you the victim of your success? That's what I'm beginning to hear. You said you brought in 9,000 people last year.
4,000.
4,000. Well, I doubled it. All right, 4,000. And it sounds like you're going for more, and you're talking about it as a regional event. Are we outgrowing the burden with this? I'm, no, understand, I'm asking a question, because if we are, then you need to start looking at making it a regional event, and that might be something that it would be good for University Heights to lean on.
We started that conversation with other cities. We're nowhere close to even beginning to figure it out, or actually having actual meeting and considered discussion to start with other cities, about potentially making it a regional event, I'd say between for the Heights and South U could along with University Heights. Where the event takes place, how much each city puts in, that's all stuff that we haven't figured out yet, but the discussion's at least started. Regarding the park itself, I can honestly say that during last year's celebration, we had room, even with the Grammy award winner, two-time Grammy award winner. We had ample room in the park, there was enough spacing, there was enough security, it was a great event. And that's what I mean by regional, because we actually had people from Pittsburgh drive to University Heights for this event, and they went away, they went away loving the city. So that's what I think.
Yeah, I agree with that. I am not against Juneteenth. I think it's good on a personal level. I wish you had a little bit more educational things going on in it that we have. I think it's a great celebration, and sometimes people need to be educated as well.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Just a couple more questions, Mr. Engelbreit. So right now, security probably has to be the same with the amount of people, correct? And you've given an additional $21,000 of expenses. Are there any other, what do you, do you think you're going to hit that 44 that was originally budgeted for?
Yes.
Okay, so you feel that you have another $8,000 worth of expenses that are going to be coming?
Yep.
And those are for the performers?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Cooney that, you know, we have the $10,000 secured already, which will lower our overall net. I do feel that like every, every event should be separate. I like seeing, you know, what does Juneteenth net out? What does Fall Fest net out? What does Memorial Parade net out? The one thing that we have to be careful about is, we have asked all of the departments to put in overtime of service, police, fire, going forward. So that's something to keep in mind also. We've asked that for the last couple of years, we just have never, that's never come to fruition. We're hoping that it comes now. But I am okay to restore, my personal opinion is to restore that back to the 44,000, now that we've got a clear explanation of what that entails. I'd like to hear what everybody else feels with that. And in our revised budget, we actually took out all miscellaneous, we took out one employee, which we are going to have discussions on, it was a service employee that might end up being amended, but because of that, we actually have a small gain as opposed to a negative $60,000 loss.
That's a new employee, not a current employee.
Yeah, and which will be discussed in the cert, I mean, that's not in this budget at all, and it has to be a discussion, because right now that was taken out, there was not, we need to understand exactly what kind of employees we're going to put, that's neither here nor there. With this, I'm comfortable raising it back up to the 44. I don't know what, if anybody else feels that, you know, they're okay with that piece. We're still, we'd still be slightly passive in the net budget.
I feel comfortable with that, and I think that's it. We have more information this year. I appreciate, Mr. Mark, I provided more information tonight, too. Thank you.
And I agree as well, and I too appreciate all the explanations and the details, because I had some questions as well. And I'm glad there was some clarification about the security, because I'm fond, if I'm not mistaken, the police chief saying that the reason for security was because it was a Grammy nominated artist. And I know that they have their own security as well. So I was surprised when you said that you all had to pay extra money for them to have security up at the stage, because they travel everywhere with their security, and their security is good. Did they have security when you guys did the D M R after parties behind the city hall with them, too? Did they take the security then?
I don't believe there was any security there. It was just friends, family of Crazy Bone, along with a couple people who stayed around and helped out the entire day, volunteers, members of the committee, I was there. So yeah, I don't remember any security, but friends and family of Crazy, along with some of the other underground artists, and again, myself and committee members and volunteers.
And so as it relates to security for this year, are you anticipating that also being the 15,000, or possibly more, because it's going to be more people?
I don't believe it should be more, but, you know, we haven't had a safety meeting yet about the celebration. We'll have at least three. We'll have at least three or four, myself along with police and fire.
Okay, so it seems, Mr. Kennedy, if we can add, not add, but reestablish the $44,000 for that one line item for the expense for Juneteenth, again, we are still slightly positive net for our budget. I did have one more question in general that was unanswered during our, Mr. Engle, thank you. I don't know if anybody has any other questions, but I don't. So you get to go. Thank you. Mayor, it was branding for $25,000. Are those the additional signs? And if so, what, where will those signs be placed?
We're in discussions with Guide Studio now about designing signs for Curbs Park and municipal campus, both of which be electronic signs. I do have a contract that has been proposed just for the design fees, which are around, just around $9,000 or $10,000. Signs themselves are bound to be more than that. That's the placeholder at this time. It could be to do one sign, both signs. Hadn't really sat down with God with regard to when it comes to design, what level of which we're looking to do design for. So this is still somewhat preliminary, but I appreciate and put in the budget a placeholder around after speaking with Mr. Kennedy, speaking with Guide Studio. And that's, that's the 25.
Okay, thank you. I would hope that the municipal and Curbs Park would be created, designed, and installed within 2024. I think sometimes I think Curbs is the stepchild of the law. And there had equally good amenities there. So I hope that that, at least the park has, so I do think, I know that we typically don't have signs that, there's a couple words written on them, but signs. Whatever they are, electronic signs. I don't remember the word offhand, but that would be good in terms of for pool closings and, you know, city displays. I know that the city doesn't have to go to E T A for that, but I think it should be a discussion just in general, how, how E T A fits with that.
Absolutely. The, the benefit of having an electronic sign at Curbs Park would be to indicate, you know, when the pool's open, when the pool's closed, other information about pool, pool activities, the tennis courts and so on. So, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of information about recreation that can be conveyed that way. And other things as well, even in the offseason, because it is on secret roads and they drag, you know, east-west through the city. So with all that, you know, having a similar sign at our city hall to do similar messaging, it would really enhance communication to the community and catch a lot of folks who, you know, right through the community aren't necessarily residents here, but could be enticed by knowing, you know, the degree of activity that we do have. And, you know, I always find, and maybe it's because, you know, I've got a sign in work, I write for other committees like you, Flit, I always know when they're hiring lifeguards and when their full hours are because I see it on their sign, their electronic sign, is that way the red light to make them turn on the light switch. So be a great feature to have here in the city.
Ms. Meisler? Yeah, Mrs. Sax?
I have a quick question. Do you have the amount of the combined miscellaneous expenses, what the total was for specifically assigning them to the budget as the dedicated expense? Thank you.
Yes.
Aye. Mrs. Sax, I do not have that with me. I couldn't produce it.
Yeah, it was significant. I don't remember also how much that was offhand, but we can get that for you.
Last year, I think it was six figures.
Yep.
I think it was about $100,000. So I'm just curious if that happened again. And I'd like to know just for my own information, maybe next week.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. We'll get that, we'll get that, too.
Mr. Rock? You mentioned the $25,000 for the city branding, but there's also another line item here for city branding promotional, $10,000. I don't know if we've got a clearer explanation, but that $10,000 for city branding promotional
Yeah, I believe it was 15 and the committee cut it to 10?
Yeah, that was the, you know, the swag items, as they were called. This was discussed at the committee meeting.
Did we adjust that or did we just?
We adjusted it, lowered it to 10.
From 15 to 10? Oh, I'm looking at the original budget compared.
New budget was sent out this week.
Oh, this actually has, okay. This is the new budget. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Rock. Does anyone else have any other questions on the budget or comments that we want to discuss before we take the vote?
Ms. Meisler?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote to amend the budget?
Yeah, I was just going to say procedurally, you'll need to vote on an amendment of the budget and then you would conduct a vote to adopt the amended ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. McQuaid.
So I will make the motion to vote on an amended budget. It changes the line item of the Juneteenth celebration to $44,000 of expenses. Is there a second?
A second.
And is there any discussion?
Ms. Meisler?
Yeah, Mr. Cullen?
So within the budget, we are allocating additional funds to hire an additional worker in the service department to, for collection recycling. So this is my, so right now, during the finance meeting, I asked the service director, being approximately 10 service workers each day for backside collection of trash. With the ordinance that was passed to improve recycling services, which I agree with that we're trying to do, I understand, we now need to hire an additional person to help facilitate this. If we were to move to curbside collection, we would need approximately eight service workers per day as opposed to 11. So now, one of our most expensive departments, the largest cost we have for labor, we now are going to add more labor to this department as opposed to what 48 other communities do in this, in the county is curbside collection. So I, I'll make sure I understood that correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. And just to, you know, kind of piggyback off what you said, there were two surveys where the majority of the residents wanted to keep that air pickup. And we are not going to go through with that discussion again. It could be that there comes a time where we cannot afford that air pickup anymore. But right now, that's not the case. And we do actually have a service committee meeting on Wednesday to tweak that ordinance a little bit, and we can discuss some of those. I know Mrs. Sax mentioned to me, she does have some employee questions there also, and we can go, we can go through those issues at that meeting. So there is a motion and a second to amend the budget with the one line item to increase the Juneteenth celebration back to $44,000. Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cullen?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wiser?
Aye.
And now I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024 as amended. Is that correct, Mr. Cullen?
Correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Should that still be down on emergency? Because it's on emergency. The ordinance clarifies in its title, and we included an emergency clause.
Right.
So we don't need to. Second, we may not need to suspend the rules, but it is on emergency.
Thank you.
And before we do take the vote, I just wanted to comment, I want to thank all of the residents for their comments. As you can see, the council does listen, and I encourage everybody to, your email, call, text, all the, all the council is here for you. And we do really take your comments and suggestions seriously. Ms. Yeah, Ms. Marshall?
I also want to thank everyone for coming and speaking as well. And I do want to point out that I'm very disturbed about this being turned into an issue of racism. I work with the city council members every day, and I, I don't see racism. I do not agree with every statement that has been made. I do not agree with, you know, we should separate the, get rid of Juneteenth at all. I didn't hear anybody say that. But I definitely do not agree that we should do a diversity day and something in place of it. But I want to make it clear that I'm disturbed about the fact that this has turned into a racist thing, because that's not what this was. This was really about the budget and concerns about the budget. I'm very proud to be an African-American woman, and I have the exact same experiences as everybody who spoke, and I'm very passionate about it, and I'm an advocate. But I don't want to sit here and not address the fact that I know that, that this is not a racist city council. And I don't, and I'm not, and I can't sit here and say, you can think what you want to think, because I don't feel that way. I don't believe that. I really want you all to know that that's not the case. So that, I felt that I needed to say that. I had a whole lot more I wanted to say, but that's, that's very important to me.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Yes, I too would like to thank all the residents and folks that came out here today to speak. You know, I just, you know, sometimes I say that, you know, one person can't change the world. Sometimes it's, it's shown that that is what it takes, is for people to get up, stand up, say what's right. And, you know, I want to thank the council for heeding and listening and responding, you know, appropriately, generally, at least, you know, especially the park where we've amended the budget and we've restored the funding. And I'm looking forward to having, you know, the best Juneteenth yet. So thank you. Thank you to the residents who came out and spoke up to make it happen. You get the credit. You get the credit for coming out here and speaking truth to the public. Thank you for doing that.
Ms. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cullen?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wiser?
Aye.
Can I just, I'll make sure Kelly gets an updated copy of the appropriations schedule, because that'll change. So just so you know that the schedule of now in, the packet is not going to be among those that count in the article.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cullen. Agenda letter B, motion to advertise and seek bids for 2024 General Yard Nuisance Abatement Project. Mr. Pennington, or, or, just, um?
Good evening. This is a typical contract that we send out every year to solicit bids for grass cutting, brushing up, and so on and so forth. It's that time of year, it'll be around the corner before we know it. So we're looking to put this forward just so that we can advertise on time and, you know, before the grass gets out of control.
And just to refresh our memories, how much was it per cut last year? Thirty-five?
Thirty.
It's thirty?
Thirty.
Okay, so we need to give that.
Somewhere around there.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yeah, is there?
Mr. Engelbrecht, I remember a few residents contacting me because they got the notice and then the next day somebody came and cut. And isn't there supposed to be a couple of days for?
There isn't supposed to be a three-day.
And who would they deal with if that happens?
I'll take the complaints. It's, you know, we, you know, we take all complaints. So we, the complaint can come to me, you know, have a conversation with Dennis typically. It's not much else. But yeah, it's, you know, all the inspectors cover the entire city on Monday. All residential streets, all the side, everything. And on Thursday, they go out again. And that's when we get the list so that we know, send it over to the grass contractors on Thursday. But yeah, three days, Monday, the city goes out, Thursday, they go out again, second time, and we know who to send out to the grass contractor.
That's helpful. And Mr. Engelbrecht, we can just be aware of if there's heavy rains, that the inspectors are giving the residents a little bit more than the three days to cut their lawn. There was a bunch of instances, there was a huge storm in that point, ton of people got cited. There was no way they would be able to cut their lawn within those two days. So if we could just be cautious in that. Thank you. Is there a motion to seek bids for the 2024 General Yard Nuisance Abatement Project?
So moved.
Is there a second? A second. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cullen?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wiser?
Aye.
Agenda letter C, motion to authorize a mayor to enter into a contract with L N E Group in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for federal and state advocacy support for the City of University Heights. Mayor, did you want to discuss this?
Oh, sure, sure. There's a memo in the pack, and I'll go over the records. Referenced at the finance committee meeting of February 27, 2024, I'm recommending that the city retain L N E Group for lobbying services to seek federal and/or state funding, federal and state funding for the sewer project here in the city. Proposed contract for us to consider reengage L N E to pursue funding for the manhole replacement project from two sources, State Ohio One Time Strategic Community Investment Fund and also the federal fiscal year 2025 congressionally-directed spending C D S, formerly known as HURM. So I included a link in the memo that explains more about the state funding. The applications for the one-time fund to the House Senator, due by April 1st, Senator Brown, which is of course federal, will be accepting programmatic and congressionally-directed spending C D S appropriations request for fiscal year 2025 through 11:59 PM on Friday, March 22, 2024. That's this month. City previously engaged L N E for lobbying services for federal, market-only, since last year before he proposed manhole separation project. The application was well received by Senator Brown's office. Despite this, and through no fall of authority of the city, the application did not advance to committee for consideration. But because the application was otherwise well received by our senator, we believe we will get strong consideration this time. In review of the compensation section of the proposal, we went back to last year's contract, so I've included both last year's contract to, to point of reference of this year's. We had a three-paying structure when we submitted the project for the previous fiscal year. It was $10,000 upfront, $10,000 if the project was listed in one of the House or Senate appropriation bills, and $10,000 once the federal budget was enacted and with that project successfully in the, in the budget. And so, and as I mentioned in the memo, I included both previous agreement and this one for the benefit of council members who may not have been due when we authorized the previous effort. The new proposed contract provides the same three-paying structure, but L N E will submit to two programs instead of one, one state fund, federal funding, manhole replacement project, the State of Ohio's One Time Strategic Community Investment Fund, and the federal fiscal year 2025 C D S. So please note that the second, third, $10,000 payments is proposed in the new agreement only apply to the federal funding because the State of Ohio prohibits any contingent payments. So like last year, the city's only real at-risk money is the upfront fee of $10,000 for which the city will get two bites of and will fund the project. For that, I would ask that you authorize for the other contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there a Mr. King? Any discussion? Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cullen?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wiser?
Aye.
Motion guesses. Agenda letter, agenda letter D, motion to approve and accept the N A P A C F I grant awarded an amount of $87,000 with a 20% match of $17,400. Robert Fisher, you can speak on this?
Good evening. Yes, so this is an application from NOAACA. NOAACA has applied and has received from the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant from the Federal Highway Administration. They've been awarded $15 million to install electric vehicle chargers at more than 70 locations across Northeast Ohio. So this would be a partnership with NOAACA to have four Level 2 ports installed in University Heights at City Hall. So this would be a partnership with Noaca to have four Level Two ports installed in University Heights at City Hall. And the location we're proposing is at the Pardon Lot at Waltersons and Park next to the Fire Administration and Detectives Bureau. The estimated cost for that would be eighty-seven thousand dollars and we'd be responsible for a twenty percent match.
Thank you. I know that we have one charger grant out currently. I think Mr. Engelbrecht was taking care of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
When will that be completed?
Shortly. We're just having a bag of force with the first engine.
And is that a Level Two also?
It is. There's two charging stations on the one. There's two, two separate chargers.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fisher, would this be a, additional chargers at City Hall this month or?
These are in addition to the ones that.
So we'd have a total of four at City Hall.
No, they're going to be at the, well, they'd be next to the.
Yeah, so maybe technically City Hall.
Okay, so they would be at the, okay.
Freshwater, as well, rather than right next to the other chargers.
Okay, and there would be, how many, how many total would there be with the new grant?
So this, this grant, this new grant would give us four Level Two.
Okay, and they would all go in at Waltersons and Park.
Right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Appley? I'm just confused here because I'm looking at the packet and it talks about, I'm also looking at the wrong item here, but there's things in here about the trail, all purpose trail. Is this the same, are we on the same agenda item? Because in the packet here, there's a letter here from Noaca dated March ninth.
Yeah, there is. There's something about a chart besides the charging stations. I think it was a mistake.
I know we were awarded the grant for the bike lanes. We're not approving that, are we? This is separate. Yeah, I don't know what the trail's in here.
Yeah, I don't know why that would be there.
Yeah, no. This should be about, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a letter from February thirteenth about the discharging ports.
Then I will hold my comments.
I said that.
I just want to be clear that the grant wasn't for the bike lanes because we had some homework we had to do first before we approved them, so.
Now, this is.
If you need me to refresh outside the meeting, I can help clarify what we needed to see before we approved that. But if this is specifically on the charging stations, then it's fine.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll so move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiser.
Aye.
Okay, motion guesses. This is our agenda letter E, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash O eight correcting the discrepancy in ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash O two relating to codified ordinance chapter fourteen twenty-four. I can't pronounce that correctly. It's a good original.
No problem.
Just for everybody's benefit, this is updating the permit fees. We found an error in one of the percentages. So we didn't want to send through that ordinance, but we want to talk to them. I know, Ms. Wiser, if you wanted to.
Yeah, what it was, there was a mistake in the fees and they showed for the commercial fees point oh five instead of point oh two, which resulted in any commercial establishment like John Carroll coming in. And they ended up with, I think, close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a permit that actually should have only cost three hundred and forty-nine thousand. So this is just to correct that error. And the way this ordinance is written, it allows us to actually backdate the correction to when the original increase in fees occurred. So any permit that came in and that was mischarged can be corrected and everybody becomes happy.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on this or questions? Okay, is there a motion for the suspension of the rules since this is an emergency?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? Right, Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Did we, did we have a motion second?
Yeah, I thought we did.
Well, we need to do two motions. I mean, the motion has to be, I think we all got a motion for the suspension of the rules, I suppose, actually, the suspension.
Well, you know, I suppose you could do it. It's not long, it's just probably not that long.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiser.
Aye.
Is there a motion for the, the ordinance?
It would be a motion to adopt.
Adopted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
Aye.
Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. Wiser.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Okay, reported twenty-twenty-four dash code is adopted. Is there any motion to enter executive session for any reason? Okay, moving on, reports of standing committees and taking of action they're on. Building and housing, Ms. Wiser.
We met this evening and covered a couple of things. We've been working with both building and housing and community development to develop flow charts that are clear to help residents know what they have to do and when they go to do it for point of sale, before sales, after sales, rental permits and building as well. When plans have to be presented and inspection scheduled. We'd like to thank both John Cheatham, who worked on the original building, and then Mr. Engelbrecht, who along with Councilman Cooney worked through the flow charts and I think we have them pretty well finalized. We also will be continuing to talk about the Safe Bill contract. We have the, we had a Safe Bill contract and three addendums that are now being combined into one contract. We finally got that on Friday, so we're beginning to review it, to talk about it. And we're also beginning to talk about sidewalks and possible programs that we might be able to come up with. One of the challenges during exterior inspections is that people get cited for replacing one sidewalk square. And replacing one sidewalk square is exceptionally expensive, which leads to lots of complaints. And sometimes things don't get done. So what we're trying to do is see if we can come up with some type of a more coherent program where we might be able to bundle things that need to be done in order to get the price down for the residents. That is far in the future. It's probably going to take about three or four months of exploring various options and programs that exist in other cities. But we are looking at doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Wiser. Community outreach, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be looking to look together an agenda and to schedule a community outreach and or technical advisory committee meeting in coming weeks. We'll be able to proveable forthcoming. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Economic development, Mr. Rapp.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Well, there's no report on economic development committee, but as your planning commission council liaison, I just wanted to bring to your attention there's a meeting on Thursday, March seventh, seven P M here in this room. There's two items on the agenda. One item is to demolish a house on Cleaver in order to construct a new home on the same lot. And the second item is to demolish, it's the old Austin Market and replace it with a parking lot. It's in a U nine district. We've had a lot of discussion on U nine districts. I think it would be important for you guys to attend here, the presentation so you can make a sound judgment when it comes to council.
Thank you. It was the finance. We just had our budget meeting. We will have our regular orderly meetings. I'll be in contact with Mr. Kennedy after the March thirty-first quarter and we will continue with those meetings. Recreation, Mr. Cooney.
I'll have a doodle bowl set out for our committee to discuss Burris Park pool and update some information regarding the city-owned signal.
Safety, Ms. Marshall.
Yes, Vice Mayor. We didn't have a safety meeting today for this month because there were no items for either police or fire, and I didn't have any urgent items. We will be, I'm planning to have a safety meeting on April first and discussing, following up with discussion on the signs for Washington. And I want to add an item for what Mr. Engelbrecht was discussing as far as to the safety of Juneteenth.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Service and utilities, Mrs. Sax just asked me to report that there is a meeting on Wednesday at six P M. And we'll be finalizing the boost recycling ordinance. And then finally, committee of the whole, it was a doodle poll for our retreat date and I'll be certainly got Mrs. Thomas to finalize that. As of right now, it's in April. We'll just finalize that date. Are there any reports of special committees and taking of action they're on? Any unfinished or miscellaneous business? Is there any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mrs. Thompson, you can roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Set. Mrs. Wise.
Aye.
Mr. Cooney.
I'm glad you remembered. You want to get out of here.
Mr. Rapp.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Wiser.
Aye.
Thank you. Your turn.